Good evening and welcome to the candidates debate for the Wakefield Town Council. This is for the election on Tuesday, April 25th. My name is Bill Carroll. I'm the town moderator, and as I said previously, this is a nice little side gig I've had for years, moderating the candidates debates. This debate will be for 45 minutes. With us asking questions tonight are Mark Sodella from the Wakefield Daily Item and Ann McGonigal Santos, a former town councillor. There are two seats open for each for three-year term, and there are three candidates in this race: Maureen Butt, Chris Carino, and Ed Dombrowski. Maureen and Ed are joining us here tonight. Chris has declined to participate in this debate. There are no opening statements this evening. Questions will be asked by the candidate. They're going to have two minutes to respond to each question. Since there's only two candidates here tonight, we can expand the time for the alleged rebuttal, if you will. The rules have been set out ahead of time. Everybody understands them. The candidates have not been provided with questions ahead of time. I'm in charge of keeping the time, so if I happen to interrupt someone or encourage them to slow down, it's no impact on what they're saying or the candidate itself. It's just to keep things moving along. At the end of debate, each candidate will have two-minute opportunity to do a closing. Strict compliance by the rules. It's written here, but you know I will enforce them. And the moderator will govern the content. That's what I was supposed to read, but we know that. Okay, so we're going to kick things off this evening since Bob Burgess went last time. We're going to let Ann go first this time, and the item can go second. All right, your first question is to Maureen.
And for full disclosure, I've served with both Ed and Maureen for several years on the town council. Maureen and Ed next.
Why don't you start over?
There we go.
I'm helping with technical stuff. Think about that.
For full disclosure, I just want to mention that I served both with Ed and Maureen on town council. We know that the town, in a very strong voice, voted to positive to have a new high school built in support of the high school project. And as a member of town council, we also know folks are concerned with balancing taxes and how will they face that new bill. What measures, Maureen, have you thought about to give some assistance to folks who really may be struggling with that new tax bill when it comes?
Thank you. I do want to start by thanking WCAT for hosting this forum. Thank you, Mark, and Ann, and Bill, and all the volunteers here. And thank you, Ann, for that question. So I was very proud of the vote that our town made last month to support the new high school. For six years, I've talked about the need for a new high school to meet the needs, the educational needs, of our students, so I'm really glad that that's going to go forward. I do think it is one of our biggest growth opportunities to make sure that project comes in on time and on budget. I think that's going to be a big, one of the big issues that the town council with Steve Mayo and his team face in the next couple of years. You know, as a taxpayer myself, it's not an easy vote when I have to vote on taxes. I'm a taxpayer from a single-income household, so I don't take those votes lightly. I will say that I, we work, the town council over the years, has worked with Steve and his team to come up with a senior tax circuit breaker that over 200 seniors in town have used this past year, and it's going to keep on growing. I was really proud. I think something that we really prioritize is collaboration, and so we reached out. The town council wrote a letter to the delegation, our state delegation, asking them to work with the MSBA to get more money, the reimbursement rates. And we were able to get reimbursement rates. We are continuously looking at ways to help the taxpayers, including myself, in this town. It is not a decision we take lightly, and we're going to continue doing that. We're going to look at, you know, not paying right away, not borrowing right away. We're really fortunate to have Steve Mayo in our town, and he's agreed to stay along for three more years, but we will work on making sure that we can get all the help back to taxpayers in this town.
Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and again, thank WCAT as well for hosting us this evening, and thank you to our moderator and our questioners tonight. Affordability is an incredibly important issue in our town, and for the last six years, I have really been focused on that as a town councillor. I have tried to be the voice of every resident of our community, and I recognize that this high school project has significant financial implications for all of us. It's important that we have top-rate schools in our community. There's no question about that. It's equally important that we make sure that we make this a community where people can comfortably afford to live, and I think for far too many people, that is becoming a harder and harder reality. I have been adamant in my insistence that we focus on sustainable budgeting. I think that's incredibly important. We can't have budgeting practices that are not keeping pace with the revenue that we have coming in, and I think the biggest relief that we can provide to taxpayers is tax cuts. A tax cut is a pay increase, bottom line, and for too many people in our community, they're struggling and they need that support. So I think it behooves everyone, from the school department to the town council, to be sure that when we're looking at budgeting now and into the future, we're incredibly mindful of the approximate $1,300 per year that the average household is going to be absorbing for the high school project. That's a lot of money for people. It's very hard for people to try to make ends meet here currently, and that's going to be an additional financial burden. But I think that's why it's important that we have skilled, experienced leaders who understand the needs of our community, who understand all of you as taxpayers and residents of our town, to make sure that we're making prudent financial decisions. We are the gatekeepers of taxpayer dollars, and it is incredibly important that we work every day and in every decision are mindful of the impact that our decisions are making. There was recently before the town council, a new policy to, as a starting point, assume we're going to have a 2.5% tax increase each year. I was one of two councillors who voted against that, myself and councillor McLean, and that was because I think that's not the right approach. We need to be finding ways to try to make the tax burden lesser, not higher. Thank you.
Mark, your question is to Ed.
After the ARPA funds that have already been spent or committed, the town will still have, I believe, several million dollars that must be committed by the end of 2024. What are your priorities for those remaining funds?
Thank you for the question, Mark. The ARPA funds are a really unique opportunity for our town because they allow for us to have an infusion of dollars to pursue projects that otherwise may not be available to us in the ordinary course of our budgeting. So they create great opportunities for us. I think the ARPA funds, candidly by their very nature, are intended to be funds that are used for legacy projects, things, I think, more capital projects or other ways that we can stimulate economic development within our community. I'd like to see more of those funds to support our local businesses, which are continuing to have, you know, great challenges in this economic climate and the uncertainty that we might be facing going forward. But I also think there's an opportunity for us to leave a mark for generations to come with certain projects. I think about the lake, and we often talk about how we can make improvements relative to the lake. I think about how we can have more places within our community for people to gather and socialize in our downtown district, for instance. So I want to be able to see those dollars used for these one-time projects that will have a lasting impact. I don't like, and I've not been in favor of, those dollars being used to try to fill gaps from a general operating perspective, and some of those dollars have done that. That's not sustainable budgeting because those dollars are not a consistent revenue stream that will continue to be provided to our community, so we have to budget outside of ARPA funds, not use those as a crutch, and I think we have great opportunity. We did use some of those funds for home heating for this past winter season. Some of our most financially vulnerable residents felt the impacts of the current, you know, economic environment and inflation. That was an important step, I think, for us, you know, to be able to support our residents. But by and large, I think that ARPA funds are really designated as funds that will have a significant impact, often on a one-time basis, but with lasting benefits for the community.
Thank you. Maureen?
Yeah, I completely agree with councillor Dombrowski. When we found out we got about $8 million in ARPA funds, we thought we were really deliberate about how we were going to use these funds, and we did consider legacy projects, these one-time, one-time investments that would make our town better and brighter. And I thought we had a really transparent process about it. So all councillors reached out, people were emailing, calling with their ideas, and we've dedicated about $6 million of that, as Mark said, and we've done some really great projects. We created the Fit Court on the west side, if you've seen those. We are exploring a pathway all the way around the lake. We're giving some money to complete the rail trail, and councillor Dombrowski's favorite project, one of his favorite things is more trees that we have dedicated funding to. We got a water truck. We're going to be one of the first communities to have an MWRA water truck, which is councillor Smith Galvin's project, and we're going to have a playground that has an ADA swing. So we've dedicated $6 million to really great projects. We've got $2 million still to use. I think we're going to continue the process that we've had. People can reach out. We've had conversations with our town administrator. There are some other projects that people have reached out to me about, including, you know, a splash pad. I agree also with councillor Dombrowski about more meeting spaces, meeting rooms where people can meet and gather. I think that's really important post-pandemic, so there are some ideas that we still haven't dedicated all those funds, but we've got a year and a half until we have to use all the money.
Thank you. Next one is Ann's to Ed.
Ed, what are one or two of the projects that you are most proud of that you've completed in your tenure as town councillor?
Expanded pit hours.
I didn't even have to ask the question. My God.
And I mean that wholeheartedly because I think one of the most important functions we can serve as local elected officials are understanding the kinds of issues that most impact our neighbors and friends in our community, and the pit is one of those places. The pit has a tremendous impact, you know, and it's beloved within our community, and expanding those hours, we used to have this rather scattered schedule that didn't really have much rhyme or reason to it. You had to pull out the calendar each time, and I said, you know, I met with DPW, who has done a phenomenal job, and I said, how can we look at it in a way that you don't have to have this little card in order to know if the pit's open on a given day? So we ended up, you know, working to a plan of every Saturday, every Wednesday, and every second and fourth Sunday, plus expanded hours and curbside pickup as well. So I think it's one of the projects that, again, has a real impact. Roads are incredibly important in our community. I have worked with DPW for years now on a roads project that we've seen in implementation. We have 88 miles of road that are counted under our Chapter 90 funding formula. That's the state funding formula for roads, 88 miles. We used to be able to repave less than one mile per year across town. That's a lot of years to get us to any sort of, you know, baseline, solid baseline level. I worked with DPW. We came up with this rating system, red, yellow, green rating system, to be able to identify the roads that were most in need of repair, to make sure we got those done first, and then also to be more proactive with the funding so that we could end up doing more roads. Now we're doing, instead of less than a mile, we're doing, we're on pace to do more than six miles per year, and that hopefully will continue to grow going forward. I think that's another important, meaningful project, and again, it's those issues that are keeping it local within our Wakefield community.
Maureen?
So as often as councillor Dombrowski talks about the pit, I probably talk about the community garden. I'm really proud of the fact that we got dedicated funding from the state to create the community garden. If you haven't visited it, it's at J.J. Brown's field. Go visit it. Forty-plus plots that every year there's a lottery done through Dan McGrath and the rec department. It is a true gathering place. You see people from all over town, really excited. It is really something I'm really proud that we created, and anyone that's gotten tomatoes or my zucchinis is also really appreciative. So I think some of those smaller projects, but that's one that I particularly worked on, that I'm really proud of, that we brought to Wakefield. I think the other thing that all the councillors have done over the last six years since I've been a town councillor is really work on being more transparent in government, and so, you know, we hired a communications manager about six years ago, five years ago. Our website is award-winning. I think we have made the process of people getting involved, getting, going to town meeting, learning about our meetings, having things online, information out there, putting out information in a newsletter, also making it easier for people to volunteer and serve, so we've made that process easier. It used to be you didn't know what the fence viewing committee did, and now it's online, and there's an application, and Sherry reaches out to you and tells you when a seat is available. And so I think making government more open and municipal government explaining it to people has been a second success of ours over the last six years.
Thank you. Mark, your question is to Maureen.
With all the new development in town, will the town need to grow its public safety departments to handle the increased population, and what will that mean?
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mark. That's a really great question. We had Chief Scory come in front of the town council last month to discuss his budget, and that was asked, and it's something that the Public Safety Chief Scory, the fire department are considering. As we have this new development, we will have more apartments. It'll be more work for fire and police. It's a conversation that's ongoing. Steve meets with his leadership team, so I think it is something, as our population grows, we have to look at if public safety does grow, and we just have to keep on having those conversations, ongoing conversations.
Ed?
It's a really important question, and it's a question that I've often asked relative to the new development we have in town. If you watch any of the town council meetings, it's the question I'm usually asking of our police and fire. I am very much supportive of the idea of what's called an impact fund, and it was something that the acting chief of our fire department, Purcell, had raised as well. An impact fund basically looks in a more comprehensive or holistic way about how a new project will impact especially municipal services, police, fire, schools, both teachers and classroom space will need. And I think that too often now, we have, up to this point, have focused more on the impact of a particular project, but not thought about projects in the aggregate. In 2010, our population was about 25,000 people. In 2020, the census put us at about 27 and change, so that number's gone up. If you look at the number of police and fire that have gone up, though, that's not been commensurately increased. And we also have to think about where the development is in relation to where our public safety facilities are. Does it make sense at some point to have some sort of a satellite, you know, a police station on the west side because we have a lot more development over there, especially with Foundry, Foundry Street, what's to be there? What does it look like for Greenwood going forward? So I think those are all important questions to be asked, but being able to have an impact fund, this way in which it leans into the developers, who are certainly anxious to come into our community, to make sure that we're providing for services as needed and not compromising services, but also not having development create a negative tax impact on residents that are currently here, that's important. If a developer comes in and wants to make money on a project, which is certainly their right and their presumed goal, they have to be able to not compromise our services or have costs shouldered on the backs of our residents here. So I think there are ways that we can do that in a more comprehensive way, and that includes a traffic study, too, townwide, not just right around the project.
Ann, next question is to Maureen from you.
I'm going to ask a question that's been in the public very recently with a lot of folks sharing some concerns. The town overwhelmingly voted for a new vocational school, and there appears to be quite a lot of pushback with regard to where that school is being built and the results of losing some of the forest. How do you respond to the concerns about the lack of transparency, or can this be fixed?
Yeah, that's a great question, Ann. So I do, I do want to say that the VOK process has been a long, deliberate process. So it's been five years in the making. They are doing all of their reviewing that they're supposed to be doing. The state runs those. While I know that they've been doing the process, I will say the VOK administration has not been as transparent as we would have liked, and I do compare the VOK administration to what we did with the high school. There just wasn't that same amount of information. Information was hard to find, and so it made me even more proud of the process we did for the new high school. You know, I like to remind everyone that the VOK has its own school committee member of Wakefield, Brittany Caricella, and she's our elected official that we should be asking these questions to, and I do ask people to reach out to her. I ask people because this is a statewide project, to reach out to our delegation, our state representatives. You know, I don't, I think they followed all the process. They just haven't been as transparent, as open as they should have been. And we've had conversations, asking them to be more transparent with the superintendent and with the school committee member. We actually invited them, as chair, I invited the principal, the superintendent to a meeting. I'm trying to remember. I think it was in January, so we had them come in front of us to give us an update and ask them some questions that we had been hearing about. I think that's what we can do as town councillors, is keep on asking the questions and being a conduit, but we don't have a decision in this right now, so.
Thank you.
Ed?
The VOK is an incredible opportunity for our community and the 12-member communities that are going to be attending there. I think that vocational techno-educations are so incredibly needed, so I am very excited about what that new facility is going to provide, both in terms of the courses, but also the ability to accommodate more students, which is incredibly important. With respect to this project, I have, I was at the groundbreaking. I have been in conversations with superintendent DeBerry for many, many months about this. We did have the superintendent at our town council meeting. Again, we're one of 12-member communities. It happens to be that this project is in our community, so I think we have, you know, a special standing in terms of the concerns we have relative to it, and I think that any residents that are expressing concerns should be listened to. I have done my best to make sure I've conveyed the concerns, especially some of the deforestation that's been talked about. We explored that at the town council meeting where the VOK did discuss that process. It was a deliberative process, as best I can tell. I don't know if the communication was at the same level that we would have had were it just a town project, but ultimately, it has been deliberative for a number of years. And I'm disappointed to see that so much of this placement has become an issue more of late rather than earlier on in the process. I think we would have been better positioned had it been a more open discussion earlier on and had people been made aware or better tuned into it earlier on, because at this point, we're a little bit at the mercy of where the process finds itself today. But I'll continue, as I have been, to talk about and try to find ways we can mitigate the impact, because I am as concerned as anyone about any sort of deforestation we might be facing.
Thank you. Mark, your question is to Ed.
The recent vote on the high school drew 25% of the registered voters to the polls. Is there anything the town government can do to combat voter apathy and get residents more engaged in civic affairs?
It's a question I ask myself often, Mark. 25% of the registered voters have decided for 100% of the residents, right? And if you look at local town elections, the percentages have been lower than that. And so there is, I understand that people have busy lives, and I like to think it's because they feel like government is working well in town, that they don't feel, you know, the same pressure to come out and vote, but I want everyone to vote, certainly. For the high school, for instance, you know, I put out PSAs, you know, relative to that, trying to get people, make them aware of where to go to vote, how to vote, and the like. But I think it's a, I think it's a challenge that's not unique to Wakefield, and if you look around other communities and look at what their percentage, the turnout percentages are, they're low, and I'd like to see them, see them higher across the board for any number of reasons, because if you think that the vote, you know, going to the polls is low, go to town meeting. There, you normally have a couple hundred people who are, you know, deciding about $110 million budget for the town, and it's a couple hundred people that are there. So I'd like to encourage people across the board. I think there's probably some awareness there. I think a lot of people aren't that familiar with how town meeting works. I think there's perhaps not enough awareness of the function of what a town councillor or school committee member does, and so ways that we can think about trying to promote what we do, not as a promotion of our work in particular, but more what our role is in the governance of a town, you know, as the executive branch, in essence, of the government. I think that that's probably something we can probably do a better job of, but it's a tough nut to crack.
Maureen?
Yeah, voter, voter education and voter participation is a passion project of mine. I've worked on it during my day job for a lot of times. Councillor Dombrowski is right that this is not unique to Wakefield, so on average municipalities, it's about 12% to 15% that you get voter turnout, so 25% is actually on the high end. I think over the last couple of years, the town has been really deliberate and thoughtful of trying to reach voters where they're at and do more education, including our website, working with town clerk Betsy Sheeran to educate voters about it. I think the town council definitely, through videos, social media, has been trying to tell people. So 25% is not a great result, but it actually is better than surrounding municipalities, and it's better than the average for municipalities. I think we just have to keep on explaining why voting is important. I, too, like councillor Dombrowski, sometimes think that people don't come to town meeting because they think we're in an okay direction and they're okay with the recommendations we make as town councillors and town administration, but I do think we, you know, I think we have to keep on trying to educate people and making it easier for people to get out the vote. I think early voting and absentee voting that the state passed the first year of the pandemic has helped some to increase that number, making it easier for people who work long hours or might have been sick to get a ballot at odd times. I think early voting for the April 25th election should be starting next week. I know they were ordering the ballots, so this is a challenge for people to go out and vote in a municipal election.
Thank you. Our next question is Ann to Ed.
Ed, knowing that Steve Mayo is a hands-on town administrator and works very closely with his department heads, nevertheless, a lot of those department heads resemble my age-ish, Bill's age, we're getting a little bit older.
Hello? Who's this Mayo guy you guys are all talking about? I'm sorry.
What are your thoughts, or what have you, how have you worked with the council with regard to succession plans, something that we didn't necessarily talk about so much nine years ago?
I have had many discussions with our town administrator, Steve Mayo, on this. He's our de facto CEO, and all the department heads that we're talking about really fall under his primary oversight and management, and we've had many discussions about that. I know that he has looked for talent within particular departments. We have a great history of having promoted within our departments, and I think that's a testament to the caliber and quality of the employee that works for the town of Wakefield. And so many of those employees are also Wakefield residents, and you're not going to get a more committed bunch of folks than people who live and work in the same community. And so I think we have seen some rather seamless transitions and/or succession planning. If you look at DPW, Rex Dinsen did a tremendous job, and Joe Conway has taken the baton, and I hope to have him for decades to come. As the DPW liaison, I work closely with him, and he and his team are just incredibly experienced, and we've actually poached some really good people from other towns, too, to come over to that department. Same with police. We saw, when Chief Smith retired, we had Chief Scory, and we had many qualified candidates, and Chief Scory being, you know, but one of many, and Chief Scory has done a tremendous job, again, of taking the baton going forward, and, you know, I think we have a good bench in fire as well. in Fire as well. So I think we are having those discussions. I do think that it's been imparted upon our town administrator to continue to be mindful of what succession planning looks like. You know, we have accounting coming up and some others, and we, as a council, have also talked about it. At our last retreat, we had a lot of discussion about succession planning, and I think that will continue to be a priority that we'll all be focused on, because it matters. The continuity of service and leadership is an important part of our success.
Okay, thank you.
Maureen.
Yeah, I agree with everything Councilor Jambrowski said. You know, Ann, when you asked earlier about our successes, I think one success that we didn't mention is we renewed Steve Mayo's contract for another three years, and I think we are very fortunate to have him in town and have him commit for another three years. And like Ed said, he's developed a great team. All of our department heads are stellar, and we are the envy of a lot of our surrounding communities. We have had active conversations since our retreat, but in my personal meetings as Chair with Steve about succession planning and talking about each department. With his contract this year, we put in a performance review process that we will be discussing at our next town council meeting, and part of performance review is talking about succession planning. I agree that we have great candidates in Wakefield. Something that we started with the comms position six years ago was we post jobs, and we have people from all over apply. We are really lucky when those jobs go to Wakefield residents, but I think it brings up the caliber of our applicants when we post it and go through a formal hiring process. You know, as someone who manages, has managed for the last 15 years in my day job, you know, you have to talk about succession planning, and you have to find the best people for the positions. That's part of just being a manager, and so we trust Steve to do that, but it is an ongoing dialogue that we're all going to have over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Next question is Mark to Maureen.
How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in town? Can all residents currently affordably get where they need to go? If not, how can transportation be improved?
Yeah, one of my favorite topics, Mark, is transportation. You know, what transportation looks like has really changed post-pandemic. So myself, I know Ann, I'm not sure about Ed, we used to commute every day to Boston, and that's just not the case anymore. We go in a couple of days a week, sometimes five days a week. We are really lucky. I chose to move to Wakefield because of the commuter rail. I live across from the Greenwood Station. I used to take that bus to Oak Grove, you know, a couple of times a week. We pay, we as Wakefield pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to the MBTA. I don't think we get our value's worth of what we pay them, especially with the cuts that they made. It is an ongoing conversation to make sure we get what we are paying for. Our residents depend on it, less now than before the pandemic, but people still depend on it. People choose to move to Wakefield because of the public transportation. So I think we have to continue those conversations with the MBTA to make sure that the buses stay in line, that the commuter rail has hours that help people. I also, something that we talked about recently, and Ann might remember this, but Town Administrator Mayo was telling us when he went to the high school, there used to be a late bus that drove around town. So if people did sports or activities after school, they could get on the late bus, and it was provided in Wakefield. And that's something, as we get this new high school, that we should have a conversation about, right? Better for the environment, more environmentally sound, having a bus that drops off students when they're late, so they're not driving to school, that they can have some sort of other option. So it's something that, as the new school gets built, we will start having more conversations about.
Ed.
I think the interesting thing about Wakefield is that we are a community that has a certain built-in infrastructure that's been in place for centuries, and we are not a subway community. We are a, we're a commuter rail community, but the commuter rail has its limitations, and most people aren't jumping on the commuter rail and going to the grocery store, going to Target, or running their deli, their deli activities. So we have to realize what our infrastructure allows for and what it does not. I think as far as transportation and getting around town, the biggest challenge that I continue to hear, and I think it is being met, but we can probably do more, is with seniors. The Senior Center has a great bus shuttle service that gets folks around town to appointments or downtown, and the more we can work on that to make sure that we're providing that sort of transportation to our senior population, I think is probably the biggest opportunity that I see within our community. I also think that as we continue to have more transit-oriented housing and development, it continues to underscore the importance of making sure we have a vibrant downtown. And since I've been on the council, I've worked on the Envision project, and I think when we, when you can work, live, and play in the same location, all the better. And we have good, we have so much potential downtown, especially if we look at, you know, development like the, what's the old Mollie's building, first-floor business and then a couple stories of housing. That kind of model, I think, works well for our downtown, that we have more opportunities for that. The old Santander Building, probably something in the similar vein. And that also supports and encourages economic development and supports our small businesses, which I think is an important thing for us to do. So I think it's a combination approach. We can't lose sight of the fact we're a bedroom community outside of Wakefield, outside of Boston ultimately.
Ann, your next question is to Maureen.
Looking at the time, I know we're not going to hit all my questions, so.
Pick your best one.
I'm picking one that will showcase both candidates. We've talked about what you are most proud of. What do you feel like you have left to do? Is there something in your mind, a project you really want to work on?
Yeah, that's a great question, because I think as I'm going into my third term, I really thought about why I want to run again. I think there's a couple of things. So I really want to see the high school done. I want to see it stay on budget and stay on time, and I want to see that new pride of Wakefield built. I want to continue being thoughtful and deliberate about the development in town. The master plan should be done soon. They've stopped doing the surveys, and it'll probably be written, you know, and done by the fall. And I think to implement that master plan is going to take dedicated town councillors working with, you know, the other committees and boards. And then what I'm really excited about, and this falls under Councilor Julie Smith-Galvin's arena a little bit, is that there is going to be massive opportunity for funding on climate resiliency, and I really want to work with the town and the other boards and other staffers to make sure we apply for those grants and get some of those money here. It's going to help with our tax base, it's going to help with some great projects, but there is going to be billions of dollars available to municipalities, and so I really want to be a part of that going forward.
Thank you.
Ed.
I think one of the bigger projects, I'll say, is the Envision project, which, again, I've been working on, spearheaded that several years ago, and we're seeing that already being implemented. If you're down Albion Street, for instance, between Main Street and North Ave, you can see how that area's been transformed. That's just, but a sampling of what we can and will be able to do in our downtown community that will encourage more economic development, support our small businesses, make for a more vibrant downtown. I think that's what people are looking for, especially when we find ourselves so often not needing to necessarily make the commute every day. We have the ability to go downtown to grab lunch, or maybe, you know, grab a drink or a meal after work, those sorts of things. I'd like to be able to continue that work. The Envision project is a really important project to me and has been during my time thus far. I think also, I guess my legacy project, if you would, would be getting more trees planted. It's incredibly important. When I first was on the Finance Committee, we were taking down more trees each year than we were planting. We're now reversing that trend so that we're looking at, instead of tree deficits each year, tree surplus is planting more than we're taking down, and that's significant. I mean, there's a climate component to that, certainly, but there's also, you know, there's a beautification component, which I think is really, really important to me. I mean, a well-shaded tree reduces a temperature by 10%, by 10 degrees, and that's not insignificant, certainly, and it's a real opportunity. And I would say probably finally, working on getting the lake clean and swimmable. That's a long-term goal. It's something we've talked about, people have talked about for a long time, and I continue to work with DPW to try to find ways that we can more aggressively work on that, look at grant opportunities relative to that, because that matters. It's the crown jewel of our community, and I think we have a lot of opportunity there.
Thank you. Okay, those are good questions, folks. We are going to now wrap up with closing statements. We'll reverse the order. Maureen, you go first this time. Your closing? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank Ann, Mark, and Bill, and I'd like to thank WCAT for organizing this event today. My name is Maureen Budd, and I hope to earn your vote for reelection on Tuesday, April 25th. For six years, I've been a committed member of the town council. I do the research, I'm prepared, I show up. Last year, I was vice chair, and currently, I'm the chair. I also want to add that in six years, I have yet to miss a meeting and have a perfect attendance record. I first ran for town council because I wanted to use my policy and advocacy skills to help my community. I ran for reelection in 2020 because I wanted to help our town survive the global pandemic. I'm running again because I want to help our town thrive post-pandemic. Our local actions have a profound effect on public health, economic opportunity, housing, education, climate change, and other areas that directly impact our quality of life. Over the last six years, I'm proud of the work that we've accomplished. Along with my fellow councillors and the town administrator and his entire team, we've increased civic engagement, we've created new positions on economic and community development, a communications manager and a townwide social worker. We've worked to protect and respect all residents of town. For my entire time on the council, Wakefield has a AAA bond rating, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars, and recently, I've supported the building of the new high school. The council has helped apply and received millions of dollars in grants that have helped our tax levy, and just last month, the council renegotiated the town administrator's contract for an additional three years. I'm really proud of the work we've accomplished, and there's still more that I want to do. I want to work on a Wakefield that welcomes all. I want to work on a Wakefield that preserves and enhances our resources, and I want to help create a Wakefield that provides for future generations. I'm hoping to earn your vote to continue to make Wakefield better and brighter. To learn more about me, you can visit my website, or please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Thank you, and thank you to WCAT for hosting this evening. Thank you to our questioners and Mr. Moderator. I have had the honor and pleasure of serving you as your town councillor for the last six years, and I don't take that responsibility lightly. I am incredibly thankful for the trust that you've placed in me, and I think that I have earned your trust. In the last six years, I have done all that I can to be your voice. I have heard you, and I have represented your voice, your concerns, your interests at every meeting. When I vote on any matter that comes before the council, you are front of mind for me. I'm not doing it for me, I'm doing it for us, for our community, and I want to be able to continue to be your voice. Affordability in this town is a real concern for me, and I know that many of you are struggling. I literally spoke, communicated with a resident today who was at Market Basket, saw an elderly gentleman who put down a carton of eggs because he said he couldn't afford them, and some other woman offered to buy them, and he said no because he was too proud. That's a problem, and I understand that it's seniors that are feeling the impacts. I understand that it is working, young families that are feeling impacts. I understand that it's just straight-up middle-class, you know, folks that live in this community that are feeling the impacts. So what can we do? What can a town councillor do? Be your voice and be a careful financial steward for you, making sure that every one of your tax dollars is being directed to the best possible purpose, making sure that there's not a dollar more in taxes expended than should be, and making sure that I do everything that I can to try to keep as much of your hard-earned money in your own wallet, because I think you know how to better spend it than anyone. And I'm going to continue to be that voice. I think I offer an important balance to the council. I respect you and your priorities, and I think I've been a strong voice for you and advocated on your behalf, so I'm respectfully asking for your vote on April 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the town council debate for our coming April 25 election. As I said in the earlier debate, and as I say all the time at town meeting, I gush over WCAT. It's a fantastic organization. They work really hard, and they put out a really, really great product. When you go to another town, just turn on the local cable and see how much better we are. I'd like to thank Ann and Mark, really good questions, again, during this debate, and I'd like to thank the candidates. Anyone who spends their time volunteering to run and serve the community deserves our admiration, so I really, you know, and you guys have been doing it for a long time, okay? I have to read this and get it correctly here. WCAT will be covering election night starting at 8:00 PM live on WCAT's government channel, Comcast 22, Verizon 42, RCN 13, on their Facebook channel, or by clicking on the "Watch Now" button on WCAT's website. A reminder, town meeting is May 15, and make sure you get out and vote. It's not only your right, it's your responsibility as a citizen, and we can eliminate this question in next year about increasing participation. That would help out. So again, thank you very much, and good night from WCAT. Thank you.
Thank you.